Okay, I have 12:20. I'd like to call to order the call meeting for Weatherford College Board of Trustees today, August 18th, 2015. And item one was a call to order. Item two is consideration of possible action utility easements for Morningstar on college property. And we all received a copy of draft easements as well as a letter discussing the Rule 11 agreement. And we have the esteemed Dan Curley here with us today answering questions. I have a couple of questions. The issue I had before was the amount of time they would spend on our property. And I noticed in paragraph three, "The initial construction shall not exceed 180 days," given weather.
Yes, sir.
Weather days, which are a day-for-day extension. And then number five says, "All debris, work material, equipment, tools, and property of the districts shall be removed on before the expiration of 90 days after completion of construction." So is that a 270-day amount of time or those consecutive amounts, Dan?
It could work out that way if the construction ended. But in the interim of anything that's on the property and is not being used for the purpose of construction will need to be moved off of the property so they can't store things there or leave debris behind.
Have we got that covered somewhere or do you?
That's just the way that sort of thing would work.
Okay.
They can't store things on it. They can't come and put things on it, wait for the construction to start, you know, in 180 days and then have 180 days to do that.
Okay. Any other questions for anybody?
Do we need a motion on that Rule 11 or we don't need a motion for it?
I think the only thing that needs to be done is that you approve the package as it is there.
That covers it, okay.
And authorize them to sign it.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, because we approved the easement.
Yes, sir.
The other day when we had our meeting.
So we're basically reapproving everything including the Rule 11 then?
Yes.
Okay, if I could get a motion to that effect?
I'm so moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There are none, that's approved. Thank you, Dan. Appreciate the work.
I've got the documents here, your signature for whoever's going to be the person signing.
Okay. Do we need to make a motion for that as well?
I think, yeah, the board chair, Mark, is the...
You take care of it.
I think it's kind of Frank's name on it.
Or whoever. The next item is the discussion of Wise County with the college budget. Do you want me to sign that now or do you want?
You can finish your business and we'll have to have it ready at the meeting.
Oh, okay. Andrew, did you want to talk about the budget?
I have nothing new prepared. There's been no changes in the budget since I presented it to you last time. If you have questions, I'll be glad to entertain those.
The total budget amount remains the same at $5,888,834. What I've done is I've put together a little presentation that's going to cover some of the issues that we've had with Wise County. They have a couple of main concerns. Their first... The nine colleges in the state of Texas that have branch campuses, Weatherford College collects the largest amount of tax revenue, which is $3,450,000. However, actually it's $3,427, according to this. This was last year's number. Now, here's the interesting part of this. The next closest that we have would be Hill College at $3.3 million, then Amarillo College at $1.8 million, and then Clarendon College at $1.1 million. Then it drops all the way down to North Central Texas, who brings in $421,000. So on the outside looking in, it sounds like Weatherford College is in a great position. When you back out the building and you talk about what is left, the $387,310 for operation, we have fewer dollars than any school in the state, including North Central Texas, that only brings in $421,000 through their branch campus maintenance tax. So when you look at the number, as a Wise County taxpayer, they think, "Well, we're giving you $3.4 million. That's a lot of money." Well, over $3 million of that is funding their building. That will never be our building. That will always be their building. So the money is paying for their building. The only portion that they are actually giving us is $387,310 to use for the actual operations of the campus. So when you put it in that perspective, I think it's easy to understand that people can get confused when they hear that we're getting $3.4 million. But in reality, we're only using $387,000 of that for daily business.
We're only being provided that much.
That's correct.
Through that campus.
That's correct. So when we look at how these issues came about, I want to start out by talking about the building itself. Mr. Martin and I were heavily involved in the planning phase of the building. And it started out being a much smaller building and then continued to grow. But during that phase, we were given information that on the $29 million bond, our lease payment next year would have only been $1.8 million instead of the $2.5 million. So that was $700,000 off from the actual payment. We were also told at the time that our tax revenue was going to be at a full nickel and we would be collecting $4 million was what they were projecting for tax revenue for. So you have a $1.3 million difference in what our preliminary numbers were to what our actual numbers are today. Also, we were told that they were planning on getting a 5% interest rate and they actually ended up getting an 8% interest rate on the bonds. So when you compound this by the issue of the payment for the lease increasing approximately $70,000 a year every year, the situation gets worse. If the county refuses to go up to the full nickel, then every year from this point forward, you can just add $70,000 more each year on top of the debt. So until we can generate enough revenue through tuitioning fees and state appropriations to offset that, which means we've got to get more students in there, you're never going to be able to resolve this problem. And the issue you're looking at is you get more students every year, but do you get enough to offset the additional $70,000 for the payment? So it's a tough situation and we're going to have to figure out a way in the coming years to resolve it because we have about four, maybe five years left of available reserves to operate before we are going to be broke in our reserve account. I talked to you, and I know this is very small, so I'm going to try and point this out and just tell you what it is. This is the original document that we received from Wise County. And at the bottom down here, it says Leon Johnson. Leon Johnson was the Southwest Securities Representative that Wise County used to actually go out and get the bonds. Leon gave us a proposal at the beginning that said that we were going to be able to get the bonds at 5%. Now, if you can read the statement up here, this is a very interesting word. He said, "This is a conservative estimate." So this was a worst-case estimate coming from Wise County back in 2010 when we were putting all of this together and beginning the, you know, pre-construction phase. And back in 2010, the conservative estimate was for the $29 million, it would be at 5%. Our payment next year would be $1.8 million. If you slide over, you can see on the conservative estimate, it said that our tax revenue would be $4,014,000. Well, clearly, that's a $1.3 million difference in what we were actually looking at. But I just find it interesting that that was a conservative estimate. And now they're wondering why we don't have the money to operate. Well, this is a perfect example why. We based our decision on the building size and the programming that we were going to have in that building off of this estimate. As you know, when we were originally planning to open the building, we were going to have a fire science program, a police academy, and an EMT program. We had to put those programs on hold when we opened the building because the cost of starting those programs was too expensive and technical programs do not make money. So we told the county at the time, "If we put these programs in place, you're going to eat through all of your reserves." Well, now, three years down the road, we can look back and say, "If we had have put these programs in, you would be broke today." And the basic result would be that we would have to move out of the building because it wouldn't be possible to pay for the building and the operations. So I don't want to use the words that we were right, but clearly we were correct by not opening those programs. Now, I would like to look at our actual number. And it shows that in 2016, our payment is going to be $2,510,000. So that's the actual compared to the projected numbers. The big question is about indirect. And we are going to change the title of this next year to Main Campus Oversight because indirect is just confusing people. They don't understand it. They don't know what it is. It's a term that we use, that we understand. But for the layperson out there, when they see in the paper that we're charging $846,000 in indirect costs, they just think it's for nothing. So Main Campus Oversight, because every department on the Wise County campus reports back to the corresponding department on the main campus. They can't do anything over there without the oversight of the main campus. So to let you know how we came up with the calculation for the $846,000, we are funded through contact hours. So we took a calculation that shows all of the WCWC contact hours for the last year. And the total was 235,506. And for the same time period, we got the total for all of Weatherford College of $2,620,773. When you divide the WC contact hours by the Weatherford College contact hours, you come up with a contact hour percentage of 8%. It's 8.9861, so slightly under 9% total. We then go and look at, once again, I'm sorry it's so small, but I wanted you to be able to see all of the departments. These are all of the departments that are included in our main campus oversight. They start out the governing board. That is this group that's in the room right now. Of your $6,100 budget, multiply that by the factor of the 8.9% to come up with their share. So they are paying a little over $500 a year for the work that you do as a board. Now, I think it's fair to say that you probably spend more than 9% of your normal board meeting discussing Wise County issues. This is a perfect example. The president's office, they pay $26,000, it looks like, out of the president's office budget. And I guarantee you, probably 70% of my time this summer, if not 80% of my time this summer, has been Wise County. So in the summer alone, we far exceeded that number. And it goes all the way down. You're looking at the business office, you're looking at financial aid, you're looking at student services, any of the areas that would deal with the main campus are on here. Now, in order to be fair, what we did is we looked at every one of these departments. We came up with a total down here at the bottom, which is over $9 million. The original number was well over $10 million. But we went department by department and we removed items that were in no way associated with WCWC. We removed well over a million dollars from our overhead number that we said, "Hey, it's not fair to charge them for this because there's no way that this is associated with that campus." All of the remaining items are associated with the work that we do in those departments for WCWC. So all of these departments, all of their totals were multiplied by the 8.9% to come to the grand total at the bottom, which you can't see, but I'll read that to you. It is $846,803. And that is the amount that we charged for indirect. Do I have any questions from the board over any of the indirect charges? And Andrew will tell you that we scrutinized these accounts. We sent them to the departments first and we had them go through and remove anything that wasn't associated. And then I went back over them personally and removed another million dollars that they hadn't removed because I thought there could be question on this. Okay? Now, there's a second issue. Why can a Parker County student go to the Wise County campus and enroll for a class and pay less than the Wise County student pays? Parker County residents currently have a tax rate of .11464. Wise County residents have a tax rate of .04615, and this is for the college. Parker County taxpayers pay 247% more in college taxes than Wise County taxpayers pay. Parker County tuition is $80 a credit hour. Wise County tuition is $98 a credit hour. And out-of-district tuition is $124 a credit hour. Up until the point that the voters in Wise County approved the branch campus maintenance tax, they were paying out-of-district tuition because they are considered out-of-district. The administration said, once they decided they were going to tax themselves for a facility in Wise County, "We want to give you a break on your taxes. We think it would be fair to give you a break. We can't give you the same break that we're getting in Parker County because our citizens are paying 247% more and we are in the taxing district. But we would like to give you some type of a break." So what we did is we looked at the out-of-district rate and we gave them a 26% basically reduction in the cost between out-of-district and the $98. When you look at that, on the discounted rate for last year, for a 12-month period of time, we generated 15,322 credit hours. Their taxpayers saved $398,372. To put this in perspective for you, if you remember back, we only generated $387,000 after you backed their building out in our taxes. If we were not getting that money and we went back to the full $124 a credit hour, we would actually make $10,000 more in revenue than we're generating from tax revenue for operations currently. So I think that that's a very interesting point to look at. To summarize, I want to give you a broad overview. As discussed earlier, after all building expenses are removed from the $3.4 million Wise County tax revenue, only $387,000 is left for campus operations. The main campus oversight, which is what we are going to rename our indirect costs, is an essential expense for WCWC campus. Without these charges, the campus would be unable to function on its own. And finally, the 26% discount tuition for the Wise County students benefited a total of 1,147 students over the past 12 months. These students took a total of 15,322 credit hours, saving a total of $398,372. That concludes my presentation. Are there any questions about what our issues are as far as the indirect costs or how the tuition is determined for the Wise County campus compared to our other campus, our main campus?
I think it's pretty clear-cut. And honestly, I feel like the citizens of Wise County are not getting all of the information that they need. We have provided this information to the newspaper. Unfortunately, the newspaper has not printed the information that we've provided. So we have no control over that. Mr. Martin?
What I would suggest is, I know we post the videos of our board meetings on our website.
Right.
Yes. I would suggest that we also, because it's kind of hard to see, post in that same section, this actual presentation on there. So if anybody wants to go look at it, they've got a good-sized piece of the charts right there.
Yes, of course.
We all, I think, received a copy of the information that Dr. Eaton provided up there as well as a copy of the article that was printed in the paper up there. There was also discussions where Dr. Eaton went specifically through each of those points with the reporter. There is going to be at least one more article. We understand where they come in and discuss the discrepancy, that there is the perceived discrepancy between what our students, what Parker County pays versus the out-of-district. My thoughts are, I can't see any reason for us to continue in a non-productive dialogue, pointing fingers back and forth. I think we've done a good job of presenting the situation and the issues like we are, like we have. I personally would suggest that Weatherford College not engage at this time in any more of this he-said, she-said type of stuff because it's clear that we're not going to be able to make any kind of end roads, have not been able to. And it's a hot situation right now. It's going to come up again next year when we go into the budget process again. Perhaps things will change. Perhaps there will be a difference of opinion. Perhaps we will be able to make some additional changes in the way that we operate down here. I think we are going to find out that enrollment is going to be a tougher issue this year than it was. I don't think that we're going to have as many as we did before. But that's my suggestion is that Weatherford College stops participating in a non-productive adversarial dialogue back and forth. And with that, I would throw it up to any of the comments that the trustees may have.
Not directly there, but you discussed the formula for deriving indirect costs.
Yes, sir.
Can you discuss just a little bit how our methodology is similar or dissimilar from other community colleges faced with that same scenario?
Unfortunately, it's all over the board. I've got the information from the other community colleges. Originally, what we did last year with Wise County, we tried to work with them on reducing the indirect. So what we told them is, "Here's the calculation that shows your actual indirect cost. This is your contact hour percentage of the actual indirect, which was over $800,000. But what we're willing to do is say, instead of having to fight this battle every year about what's included indirect and what's not included, let's just say we take a flat 15% of WCWC expenses. By doing that, it dropped the indirect down to $740,000. It was a close approximation to what the actual indirect was, but it still gave them a little bit of a reduction in the indirect. But one of the problems we ran into was that they felt like since that was now the indirect, they could start removing some of the expenses. They wanted to remove the lease payment, which was the largest expense at $2.5 million. Well, you just cut your indirect in half so it's not even close to being an approximation of what the true indirect was, which defeated the purpose. But having said that, Amarillo College currently does the same thing we were doing. They took a flat 15% of total campus expenses to come up with their indirect. I talked to their president and he said they have proposed to move that up to 20% because the 15% couldn't cover the costs of indirect. Clarendon College charges 40% of all administrative salaries to their branch campus. Frank Phillips College, which collects a very small amount, just charges a flat rate for theirs. Hill College, and this is very interesting, Hill College was the college that had the closest tax revenue from their branch campus to Weatherford College. They bring in a little over $3.3 million. They charge 50% of all of their college overhead. All the college overhead, half of it is charged back. Here's the difference between Hill College and Weatherford College. After you back out their building expenses, they've got close to $2.5 million remaining for operations. If you remember, we've got $387,000 and we bring in $100,000 more than they do. They've got $2.5 million. So it lets you see the impact that the building and the rate that we're paying on the building is playing into this. Another interesting part about Hill College, the main campus keeps all contact hours and all state appropriation. We give every contact hour and all state appropriation to the campus that is generated from the campus. So Wise County has that on top. So Hill College is not even getting that. Midland College is taking 36% of the tax levy for indirect. If you calculate ours right now, we're at 24%. North Central Texas, they bring in $4.4, or $4.04 per contact hour. If we were to multiply doing that, we would be at close to a million if we use that calculation. Let's see. And of course, you've got ours at Weatherford College. Now, Temple in Trinity Valley, they're both collecting the full nickel. Temple's situation is far different than ours because they have a partnership with TSTC. And TSTC builds the building for them that they're using. TSTC also pays half of all of the costs associated with the campus. And then Trinity Valley is trying to work on the way right now. They're collecting the full nickel, but they're trying to work on the way to fairly distribute indirect because the full nickel doesn't cover all of the costs. But unfortunately, once you reach the full nickel, you have no other options because that's the legal limit for the county. So the methods are all over the board. We have talked with our accountants, our auditors, and they feel like this is a very fair way, since colleges are funded based on contact hours, to determine what their fair share is. And I just can't imagine that less than 9% of our overall contact hours is not a fair distribution, which is my opinion.
And the methodology that we use is...
Same.
Is perfectly under general accepted accounting practices, sir. Another issue that keeps popping its head up, I just thought of, is Mr. Clark up there keeps saying that he's pushing for a seat on the Weatherford College Board. And we keep telling him by law that cannot happen. And in any event, they don't pay the same rate of taxes I say that we do. But that point still keeps getting put out in the papers.
Texas Education Code 130.081 governs college boards. And since we are a single-county college district, we are the taxing district. Wise County is a branch campus of our main campus. They are not part of the taxing district even though they have a branch campus maintenance tax. By law, if they were to review that, they would see it's not the same thing. It takes legislative action to place somebody from outside of our county on our college
Any other comments or suggestions?
What's in the agenda for the rest of, say, starting the fall semester, moving into the spring? What outstanding items are there that have to be dealt with?
Well, from our point, we operate as usual. If the county would like to discuss moving the branch campus maintenance tax rate to the full nickel, then we would definitely entertain ways that we could reduce our budget in order to have a budget that has zero transfer, which is what the ultimate goal is. We've got to get these interest rates refinanced. The only way we're ever going to be able to have a successful campus is if we can get those rates refinanced. And it's in both of our best interests to do that. But we don't feel like we can do that without them going to the full nickel first.
In order to do that, we understand that there would have to be three years of that campus operating in black. Their solution has been, in order to get into the black, is for all of those costs to be shifted back down here onto Parker County taxpayers rather than look at the issues up there with the... with the cost of the hard facilities. So, otherwise, you would just be, I think it wouldn't show a true picture of what the cost of the campus is. So, it's, it's a very tough situation.
And it's a little challenging to accept having the costs from, from Wise County come down to the taxpayers of Parker County. I, I want that campus to thrive and succeed, absolutely. But I know I have a difficult time not properly ascribing the true cost, the true expense of administrative, of, of those remaining expenses to be on the correct part of the ledger. And if we, if we actually took what we call the indirect cost and made it indirect cost, that they employed a president, that they employed all of the administrative functions, I, I don't have any clue what they are. I know it's going to be like, I know as a business owner what mine are. And they are a huge percentage, a huge chunk of, of the operation. If we tried to remove that from an indirect approach to a direct approach, then when we look at it in that regard, it's quite a discount, I would suspect.
Yes, sir.
If we actually looked at the two items.
It's easy to be a Monday morning comeback, but you've got to look at, even with the oversize of the building. We've talked about how that building wasn't, didn't initially start out to be that big. But if, if just the bond interest rate would have been in the arena of what we were providing as estimates back there, we would be fine. We would have to do some tight bel- belt tightening and stuff. But you can see the differences up there that Dr. Eaton talked about. And then you throw onto that the deep, you know, the lower valuations because of all the mineral things that went down, the evaluations that went down. Then you've got a compounding effect on that. If, if those two things were rectified, then we wouldn't be having this discussion. We'd be in great shape.
And Dr. Hanson, to answer one of your questions, you talked about Parker County taxpayers funding a portion of this. I know Dan is probably squirming over there because he was actively involved in all of the lease agreements and the different agreements that we signed. And one of the sections talked about available funds. And he made it very clear in the available funds that Parker County tax dollars were not available funds. Available funds are all funds that are generated in Wise County. So, is that be correct?
Yes, it is.
Sounds like there's needs to be a lot of cooperation to have this move forward successfully. Puns both heads.
More discussions to come, no doubt. Any other comments or questions on that? Do put this on the site where we can provide for us. If there's no other points or questions, we can move on to the next item, which is a closed session to consult with your college attorney. Is there a need to go into that closed session, anybody?
Sure.
Okay, very good. Then I would ask for a two-minute adjournment for recess, two-minute recess.